He was not sure if he was going to be able to. We sent him the Zoom link in case, so he'll come in as a panelist if he decides to. No, he's not.
I'll call the planning and zoning commission meeting to order. The first item is roll call. Steve Hoochek.
Here.
We have four of our regular members present, which is a corner. First item on the agenda is public hearings. First one is public hearing for SUV 2203, three subdivision Bishop and Sorak.
Public notice. Notice this hereby given that the public following public hearing will be held on February 28, 2023 at 7:00 PM. The community route two town hall annex 134 run on point vote and virtually with the zoom by 20 feet following. So 22-03, we subdivision plan shows land of first constitution bank on a plant type modification to lot C Bishop and Sorak subdivision, creating two lots or a 5.65 acre parcel. parcel is identified as pin 168907574786. CR zone VP development LLC applicants, we can say holdings of Grunewell C. Is unique will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar, or can be attended by visiting. 769418567805276 or by phone. 130758592 applications are on file and mobile republic inspection.
Or the process for the public have the applicant make their presentation. Staff presentation and open it public for any questions or input they have and then open it to the commissioners for their questions. Repeat the cycle until we have all the questions or all the information we need answered because once the public hearing is closed, we cannot receive any more information before to make our decision. So if the applicant and would you just say your name and
Of course.
Address of who you work for.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is John Casey. I'm an attorney. I'm a partner with the law firm Robinson and Cole. The applicant development in this matter, which is as was read into the records proposal to re-subdivide an existing commercial property at 42112. It's two new conforming lots. For the record, I'll note that we provided staff Prescott with certificates of mailing for the butters. Those have been entered into the right. With me this evening is Stephen Cabral, a professional engineer and PhD. He's the president of Crossman Engineering. He'll be doing the substantive presentation on the plan. I think with us on Zoom call are Vincent Porzio, the principal of VP development and as well our surveyor Jeremy Oscandi from AI engineers. If there's any questions you need of our surveyor, but I think Steve will probably be able to answer most of your questions here in person. Just briefly, this is on Route 12 in the middle where all those car dealerships are. It's an old subdivision going back to 1971 and as detailed in your staff memo, there's been many modifications over the year. And basically, we're just asking to take a 5.65 acre parcel and divide it to lot one will contain the existing Kia dealership and 3.197 acre parcel in lot two will be the new parcel of 2.405 acres. That will is proposed for new development by VP development. With that, I will turn Steve and he'll walk you through the technical aspects of the application. Unless there's any questions for me? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Cabral with CrossFit Engineering. And we're the civil engineers, but we work closely with AI engineers of Connecticut who actually perform survey services and they actually prepared the subdivision plan, which is what we hear for tonight. Without being repetitive, the parcel is 5.6 acre parcel of land. Looking at the screen, north would be at the top of the screen, south towards the bottom. The southern portion of the site is fully developed and it contains an existing Kia dealership. The northern portion is the undeveloped parcel of land that we are subdividing to create an opportunity for future development. At the partial zone commercial and it's in the water resource protection district. One of the benefits of this lot is that the environmental scientists who viewed the parcel and surrounding area confirmed that there were no jurisdictional weapons on the property or spaces of the property. So there are no that extent onto those lot. As you can see from the plan, it's a through lot since that it has frontage on public ways on both the east and west side. The main access will be on the east to the right, which will be from 12. Referred to access from the new parcel. And it also has both lots of frontage on Pleasant Valley South towards the rear. Currently, the Kia dealership does have access to Pleasant Valley South. But as you'll see in a few minutes, the proposed development is not proposing to utilize access from Pleasant Valley South. Okay, I changed the plan sheet to sheet number three, which represents the actual subdivision of land. And what it shows is that up to 5.6 acre parcel. We are creating the two lots. The Kia dealership will remain on 3.2 acres in the new parcel to the north, but we're referring to his lot two. It'll be 2.4 acres in size. The dimensions of the the southern Kia slot is approximately 440 feet of frontage along Route 12 and on average about 316 feet deep for the total of 3.2 acres. Now, the reason we came up with that dimension, the 440 feet of frontage in the 3.2 acres is that we needed to make sure that for the existing lot, the existing Kia lot, we want to make sure that there was adequate pervious surfaces so that we would meet the town standard for impervious coverage, which was 70%. So as you'll see on the subdivision plan, the remaining key a lot is slightly less than 70% impervious coverage. A lot too, which will be for a future development as approximately 264 feet of frontage with an average depth of 100 feet for total actually at 2.4 acres in size. Now, in regards to access, one of the benefits of lot two directly in front of the partial, there is an existing traffic signal. So as development occurs for this lot, we'll be able to apply to the OT to amend and upgrade the traffic signal to accommodate the new access. There will be a fully controlled fully controlled access into the new lot. The survey also indicated that there is access to public water, public sewer site. So we do recognize that we'll be going through the local permitting process to tie into public public utilities. And what I'll do now is just for flip to the next sheet. The sheet one represents the detail existing conditions of the proposed lot two. And as I stated initially, in which as an engineer, I think it should be very important. There are no mountains on on the lot. The topography does vary. The low point is long Route 12. And the terrain is such that from front to back, which we twelve is front to back. There's a rise in elevation of about 15 to 20 feet. So there's a gentle slope. Again, from plus the back, as we develop a design, we'll certainly take into consideration the the changing grades. The the majority of the lot is like a scrub brush. So many years ago, the land must have been cleared, but there is quite a bit of vegetative growth that that does exist. The soils we found were mostly a lonely soil. And as we proceed into the final design of the actual site plans and come back to the beans, planning and zoning commission. We'll only have more detailed soil evaluations to document, let's say, the infiltration capacity of the soil as well as the depth of water table. What I'll do next is go to the actual proposed, the typical. I flip the sheet, the plan set, the sheet C2, which is which was prepared to represent the typical site layout of a potential developer. Now, tonight, we're not here seeking approval of the actual site design. You know, that'll be a separate application. But we did. What we do understand is wasn't during this stage was to demonstrate to to you that the site is developable and that we're leaving a parcel without a grid frontage and depth and area so that it could be developed and be told of the zoning requirements. So as you can see from from the the plan that we presented, we are proposing one in and out access, which would align with the existing traffic light. We do recognize that we'll have to go to the Connecticut DOT. The there is water and sewer on both Route 12 as well as Pleasant Valley South. So conceptually, conceptually, we propose to connect to the utilities in Route 12. But if during the permit process, the utilities prefer we connect to Pleasant Valley South, we certainly can accommodate that. But based upon the topography, at this point, we feel it's more appropriate to connect to utilities and we we listen to the town staff and what we're proposing to do in regards to offset improvements is to completely reconstruct the sidewalk that runs along the frontage of Route 12. And as you can see from the crawlouts, we're identifying that we're going to replace the existing Batuminus Parkway with the Connecticut standard concrete sidewalk. And while on the site plan, but I'll briefly do is take a step back and mention the two waivers that were requested. One of those waivers has to do with section 4.7 in regards to sidewalks and curbs. And section 4.7 does state that 4.5 concrete sidewalk shall be included in the non-aided white away with both sides of proposed local roads. Such as access village and sub-village roads. So basically, in order to conform to this requirement, we would be building sidewalks on the frontage of Route 12, which we are proposing to upgrade as well as the frontage along Pleasant Valley Road South. We are seeking a waiver to not build sidewalks along Pleasant Valley Road South and the reason being there is an existing sidewalk on the opposite side of Pleasant Valley Road South. And on the development side of Pleasant Valley Road South, there are no sidewalks. So in essence, if we built the sidewalk, they'd go go nowhere. So we feel based on the existing infrastructure, it's more appropriate to seek that waiver. And the second waiver has to do with section 5.4 issue with issuance of permits. And section 5.4 states that no building permit shall be issued by 10% of lots in a subdivision or section of the subdivision until all public improvement required by the commission. Or acceptance by the town. 10% of the lots in the subdivision consists of less than two lots. The building permits will not be issued for the last two lots until public improvements have been completed nor for acceptance to the town. Now, in this case, this is a subdivision where there's no no public roadway to be constructed in order to create the lot. And the public improvements are really limited. They're essentially limited to the proposed sidewalk along Route 12 as well as some street trees that will be planted along the front of the streets. It's our opinion that it'd be more appropriate to for to install those public improvements at the time that the building permits are issued and site development is underway as opposed to making those improvements prior to the issuance of a building permit. So that was our reasoning for those two waivers. The next sheet that I turn to is the typical grading and drainage in utility plan for potential development. And again, this is only a theoretical conceptual design based upon a potential development to prove to you all that it is a developed lot. And basically, based upon the topography and as as I said, from front to back, the terrain rises by about 15 feet. You can see that we're able to grade the proposed development such a manner that we create a relatively flat plane where the building and parking lot will be. And that building and parking lot will only be slightly raised above Route 12. And then we have a slope that will rise on this on the west, north and south. And that will rise at a three to one slope, which is a slope that's gentle enough to be vegetated with, you know, shrubs along. And then we'll be able to match the existing grades prior to reaching property lines. In regards to drainage, we recognize that there are water quality as well as groundwater recharge and peak flow attenuation standards. So at this point, we're recommending that all of the drainage be collected in the closed drainage system, meaning a series of catch basins and manholes. The one or that will be collected in that system will went through water quality chamber to remove the sands and silids and the the heavy particles. And then that will discharge into a subsurface infiltration system. And that system will be designed to fully conform to all of the the town and state standards. And as I said earlier, we recognize that once a final design is is prepared, we'll be back before you the specific site development. And as I said, this only represents a theoretical slate. Yeah, I'm getting a little quick at playing up the plan. But this I've turned the sheets C4, which represents the typical soil erosion control plan. And this is a plan that I'm sure you see with all projects. Basically, it provides information to the site contractor so that during construction, construction can occur in a manner so that there's no sand or silos or dust that impacts the surrounding properties or neighborhood or adjacent undeveloped areas. And that would be with the series of, you know, crushed stone access drive under still fence, straw bottles surrounding the site and typical erosion control matting. And then the last plan that I'll discuss today is the the typical landscape plan for the for the development. And basically, the intent was to demonstrate the intent to fully conform to the town standards. In the primary concern, based upon input from town staff, was to ensure that we added hit out of bridge trees along both both way frontages 12 as well as Pleasant Valley South. Other than the street trees aligning both frontages, we just have a mix of either evergreen plants along the sides as well as flowering shrubs adjacent to the building. But again, our landscape architect will prepare a much more detailed plan at the stage. So I hope I gave you enough information that you need at this point. But as I said, we know it's not a site plan ready to be developed. So it's our presentation result more general in nature, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, I'll open it up for questions after. And you're not addressing what happens to lot one?
On lot one? Yes, the lot one will remain as the existing Kia dealership.
Oh, it's going to be the whole lot. I thought you were going to subdivide.
Oh yeah, right now, the entire lot's 5.6 acres. And the Kia dealership will remain on the 3.2 acre lot.
So you're only going to develop lot two?
We're yes.
That's all night. Yes.
Yes. Yes, the Kia dealership, it's my understanding is there.
Staff want to go over their presentation.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. So thanks for that presentation. As just as so you're aware, as part of this public hearing, the the planning and zoning commission have 35 days until you must close this hearing to be the March 28th hearing. We held a staff review with the applicant early January where they received comments from planning, public works, the chief of police and Grunewell Utilities. As part of the comments and 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 Cigoball mentioned this as well, that Public Works had recommended the replacement of the section of sidewalk on Route 12 that is currently between 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 us with concrete. So that's we're happy to hear that. The only other outstanding comments are from Grunewell Utilities. And those issues will be addressed with this middle of a site plan application. The original lot is located in the water resource protection district, as was as was mentioned, which contains stricter regulations in terms of source water protection, including the regulation to contain that the site contains a maximum of 70% impervious. As Mr. Cabral had mentioned, lot side, a lot one was sized to contain less than 70, 70%. It's it's at 69.7%. And then lot two will will need to address this regulation when when again the site plan is applied for. The one thing to mention, Mr. Cabral had mentioned something about infiltrating the park from the parking lot. That is not allowed in the WRPD, but again, that's something that will be addressed with a site plan. There is a, you probably have seen this in the staff summary. There is a pre-existing pedestrian walkway indicated on past subdivisions inside plans. This pathway was established as part of a license agreement decades ago to permit children to walk to Pleasant Valley School. This walkway is currently overgrown and does not appear to be used. As stated, the applicant has proposed not to reestablish this walkway, but ultimately, this request must be approved by the commission. The applicant, the applicant, the applicant has had the property professionally appraised by licensed real estate advisor Champagne Appraisals, which was in the packet. The town's tax successor reviewed the appraisal and accepted the assessment of 1.4 million. If accepted by the commission in accordance with section 4.95, a payment of open space of 140,000, the equivalent of 10% of the fair market value of the land prior to the subdivision shall be paid prior to recording the plans. And then, as Mr. Cabral had mentioned, the applicant is requesting two waivers of the regulations. The first one is a waiver for the sidewalk requirement for Pleasant Valley Road itself. There is an existing 10-foot multi-use path on the other side of Pleasant Valley Road itself. And then another waiver to eliminate the requirement that the public improvements be completed and offered for acceptance by the town prior to the issuance of a building permit. And I think you all should have received that that waiver request in email yesterday. And when ready, I have a draft motion available. Thank you.
Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on this? So that'll present anybody online? I guess you have to raise your hand.
Yeah, if there's anyone online who wants to address the commission, you do need to raise your hand on this issue.
See anyone? So I'll open it then to the commission for any questions or comments they have. I'll start with you, Val.
Well, I really don't have much. I understand most of it had to do with what amounts or what amounts to a test fit of of something on there and is not being proposed. It's just a test fit that it makes it work. Okay, like I said, disappointed to see a lot as a 15-foot grade difference allows you to have entrance on the second floor in the back, the first floor in the front. I would love to see that. But it doesn't have anything to do with what's happening now. Something does fit. It looks fine. I'm fine with the sidewalk being changed to concrete. I know there's nothing on the Pleasant Valley side, especially being sandwiched between two back two other uses that aren't going to change in in our lifetime from car agencies. So that's not going to change anything. If we have on here the as far as the trail is concerned, I just it also doesn't apply now because we're not looking at a site plan. I wouldn't want to see anything that would preclude putting in some connection in the future. Right now, even what we're showing doesn't conclude. Right now, the uses that are being proposed on the Pleasant Valley site around there where the school is still doesn't require any great connection back to military housing, which is what it was, was connection from military housing to the school. That's not going to happen again. But I don't know what will be there. So it's the only connection within a long way, north and south on that block. So just want to make sure that's still open for a possible future connection along the north side of that lot. Though, as I said, nothing needs to happen here. Just that I have on the record that it's an idea. Other than that, I no issues with this.
So have any comments or questions?
Just one comment. In addition to how North I appreciate the presentation. Makes sense to me. I would hope though, by the time you come back with your your proposal, the site plans and all that, that maybe we'll have a better planting list than we do. Sorry, I've been on this. This has nothing to do with the applicant per se, but I think that might be a good goal when in fact for trees, two out of five are native shrubs, one out of seven and ground covers and so problems of so it's an opportunity. It's not difficult. I think we could do it. So. But yeah, thank you so much. Oh, by the way, I'm I'm fine with this application.
State. I'm just I have also no problem with the waivers as stated. Is is the existing Kia dealership, is that a pre-existing non-conformance? Because of the WRPD.
I'm just thinking about whether, I think dealerships are allowed in the WRPD. Yeah, it's gas stations that are not.
Gas stations that are not.
Right, but but dealerships are under certain conditions, of course.
Okay. So we don't get any into any problem with another car dealership. Okay. All right, um, that's basically all I have. I like the idea of the beefing up with the sidewalks and as far as Pleasant Valley is concerned, don't need it there. So that's all I got. Okay, I don't have any questions, comments. Does staff see any reason to to hold in the hearing open? Is that, does the applicant have any concerns closing the hearing?
For the record, John Casey, no, no, we're happy closing the hearing. And so we can move on to the next part back here with something a little more.
Well, we have, we have to act on or can act on it.
Yeah, you can act on it. Yes, you'd like to move along. Yes.
Anyone on the commission have any problems with closing the public hearing? You know, make a motion to close the public hearing for the re-subdivision of Bishop and Sorak. 21 second. Moved in second. Any comments on the motion? Vote on the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any? Any opposed? Any extension? Motion is carried unanimously. So we'll move on to our next. Would you read the notice for? Subdivision twenty three oh one. And I am holding her and Thomas Paul and Tany.
Notice this hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. Use room two, Town Hall Annex One three four. Twenty three dash zero one, ten subdivision, man of Diane, Helen and Thomas Paul Antonio. Creating two residential lots, only four acre parcel. The parcel is identified as two seven one zero one five six zero two eight five. Zero the road, RU eighty zones. D G T Associates applicant and our parent or journalist Paul Antonio of this. Is linked to the posted town's website, its calendar, or can be attended by visiting. Six nine four one three eight five six eight seven, the password two zero five three seven six, or by phone one. One. Seven five eight five two, application going file, available for public inspection during normal business hours, the planning department one three four. Ended the seventeenth day of February twenty twenty nine at Groton, Connecticut.
Yeah. Like to make the presentation, you say your name and address or we will work for it.
My name is Susan Matterns with D G T Associates located at one forty eight Route Two, Preston. And I'm the project land surveyor. And project manager on this job. I'm here to represent Diane Heron and Thomas Paul Antonio for two lot subdivision located at. The address is zero River Road in Mystic Section of Broton. Um, property to the north and south. Of this parcel. Do you mind if I step up here?
Oh, no, yeah.
Actually.
Take a microphone with you.
Point here and they can see your point.
Or you can point on the.
Yeah, what's that?
You can point over here with. And so they'll see it on the screen. Anybody online, let's see.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, property. To the north and south is privately owned. And then the applicant owns property. Located to the east. I'm trying to do this upside down in my night hair. So bear with me for a second.
The upside down on the screen.
Okay, the Mystic River is down in this location. And this area that is east of the subdivision is a tidal marsh. The site contains four acres in total. And it's located in an RU eighty zone. Lot one, slot one contains two point zero three acres of land. Lot two, one point eight four acres of land. And parcel A, which is a strip of land between the existing street line of River Road. And the proposed street line of River Road that will be deeded to the town of Groton for highway purposes. And that contains zero point one three acre of land. Each lot has a separate driveway accessing River Road. Lot one shares a driveway with the applicant's existing house. Located at one two zero six River Road. So the driveway is located right here. It has been. Um, roughed in in this area, this area right here. Mister Paul Antonio is installing brick pavers. And this driveway location was approved by Department of Public Works and Town Council. Um, the location for scenic highway um, classification. And. The shaded area. Along this driveway is an existing ever-source easement that we prepared in two thousand twenty. And the hatch section will be the easement area. So lot one will be subject to this hatched easement area for the driveway. In favor of Diane Heron and Thomas Paul Antonio. Driveways will be built to town of Groton standards and I'll just. Um, at the end of my presentation, just go through the details on sheet two and three. I just briefly said this, but I'll just get it into the record. Mister Paul Antonio received an excavation permit from the Department of Public Works on five eighteen. Two thousand twenty two for the driveway entrance on lot one. And authorization was obtained by Groton Town Council on eleven oh four, two thousand and twenty. For the lot one driveway entrance. The entrance says, oh, I said that, okay. And then lot two driveway, that's an existing. Um, curb cut and that will be improved to town of Groton standards as well. In fact, um, Mister Paul Antonio for this driveway. Just was at Town Council and they scheduled a public hearing for the scenic road designation for that driveway entrance as well. The property slopes upward from River Road. To a knoll on each um, property. For lot one, looking towards the conceptual lot. House location, the elevation of River Road is approximately thirteen feet. And the house location elevation is approximately thirty four feet. For lot two, looking towards a conceptual house location, the elevation of River Road is approximately fifteen feet. And it again goes up to about elevation thirty four feet. The project depicts two proposed residences with onsite wells and septic systems. The purpose of depicting the conceptual lot development is to demonstrate compliance with town of Groton regulations. And leg light health district requirements. Soil testing was performed. To demonstrate compliance with the state of Connecticut Public Health Code. Sanitary system design criteria and soil test results appear on sheet two. No restrictive layers appear in the areas of testing. Septic areas were tested at approximate elevations of twenty three to twenty eight feet. For each lot, we have depicted a four bedroom house. Percolation rates were less than ten minutes per inch, and therefore for both lots, we propose three rows of sixty five foot long leaching trenches. Silt fence is proposed down gradient of all construction activity. And a hundred percent reserve septic area is is provided. Wells are proposed and all minimum separating distances are maintained in accordance with Public Health Code. This conceptual plan was approved by Ledge Light Health District. When it comes time to develop each lot, a separate residential site plan will be prepared specific to the actual development to be proposed. At that time, the construction sequence, soil erosion and sediment control notes. And sanitary notes for the septic system installation we have outlined on sheet two will be guidance to the designer of each individual lot. Title wetlands were delineated in the field by. R. Richard Snarsky, soil scientist and wetland biologist. There is a fifty foot wide coastal resource setback from the tidal wetlands. So in the tidal wetland boundary is depicted as the light blue color on the plan. If you can see that. It's right along here. And the fifty foot coastal resource setback is the darker blue line. No activity is proposed to take place within said setback, nor within the flood hazard area zone, which is pink. On the plan, pink dashed line. And that's elevation ten. Generally, construction of residences will take place approximately twenty four feet above the base flood elevation. The remainder of the site is zone X. All activity is proposed to take place west westward of the coastal resource setback line. The coastal jurisdiction line, which is elevation two point zero, which is. This line in here, which is. Light green. And the coastal jurisdiction line is a current regulatory boundary for a deep office of Long Island Sound Programs. Mean high water elevation zero point nine, which is title ownership in Connecticut. Flood zone elevation ten and topographic information depicted here on reference North American vertical datum of nineteen eighty eight. The site is fully vegetated and all coastal resources are in good condition. Please refer to the coastal area management management report prepared by Robert Shook P E for the site. Along um, River Road and behind the proposed street line, we depicted at approximate fifty foot intervals. Uh, where no existing trees exist. We want to plant red oak trees. And the specifications appear on one of the detail sheets. Um, in the area to the north, a budding pillar and. To the south, a budding Atkinson, we've proposed um. Giant green arbor by the. And we're requesting a waiver for sidewalk installation per the submitted letter in the package. Trying to read that into the record? Yeah. Okay, before um, I go on with the next, I just want to. Can you hear my voice without this microphone?
I shake you.
It's much easier than to transcribe. So I just wanted then, this is also one, but with no color. I just wanted um, briefly just state the contents of sheet two, which is all the soil test information that we perform with Legulate Health District. The sanitary system design criteria and the minimum minimum leaching spread calculations, these are all for conceptual. When it comes time, as I said, for someone to actually construct some something there, there will be an individual residential site plan. And then we included sanitary notes for septic system installation. Um, that again is for later on down the road. And soil erosion and sedimentation control notes and construction sequence for lot development. That is all going to be part of a later residential site plan, but we put it on here just so there'll be guidance for the future designer. The two details at the top, um, the first one is the electric distribution easement. It's just a uh, blow up. And the second one is uh, detail of the access and utility easement. Oh, I failed to mention that. Um, lot one will be subject to. Not only the utility easement, but also. The access with driveway. Okay, on sheet three, we just have various details for. Septic dis- details, the tree planting detail. Driveway details, um, anti-anti tracking pad, which will be installed at the time the um. Construction begins for each individual lot sediment fence and then just a little blow up depicting the soil types. Um, on the property and also. Um, clarifying the. Flood zone. Areas, um, as I said before. Everything that is in the area of um. Conceptual lot development is in flood zone X. And then we have the flood zone A E, which is elevated at elevation ten. Okay. Now I'd like to um, address the coastal resources. In order for projects proposed in coastal boundary to be consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. They must be designed to avoid, or if unavoidable, minimize adverse impacts to coastal resources. And future water-dependent development opportunities and activities. There are many identifiable. Adverse impacts to a property such as degrading water quality, degrading existing circulation patterns of coastal waters. And many others. None of these types of adverse impacts exist for this property. An adverse impact as it relates to this project would include. Siting of a non-water dependent use, which would substantially reduce or inhibit existing public ass- access to marine or tidal waters. There's currently no public access on this site of the proposed development. The lay of the land is such that it does not lend itself to practical public access. The east side of the proposed building lots abut delineated tidal wetlands and a tidal marsh, as I pointed out before. There's no direct access to the Mystic River per se. If one were to enter the site at the southerly entrance off River Road, one would have to walk around two abutting properties to then reach the tidal wetland boundary. So if you walked in at this existing curb cut, you would have to go behind the Atkinson and the Peters property. Along the steep slope. To reach just the wetland boundary, which. Is approximately. Seventy five feet away from the Mystic River, and this is all marsh. And you'd have to walk down to elevation point nine. Um, in order to reach the Mystic River across the tidal marsh, which is unacceptable. Additionally, the property slopes downward from the crest of the hill from approximate elevation thirty. To elevation six, more or less at an approximate forty percent slope. So you have elevation thirty in this area. And the title. Boundary is marked is approximately elevation six. Per the Groton subdivision regulations, the planning commission requires that land of suitable size, dimensions, topography. And general character be reserved for parks and playgrounds, natural open space areas or other public purposes. The reservation shall have adequate road or pedestrian access for the particular purpose envisioned by the planning commission. So we. We have four acres of land. If we subtract out the. Two building lots. Four acres is a hundred seventy four thousand two hundred forty square feet minus the two building lots. Um, we have about five percent of land left. And the town requires ten percent for open space. Land reserve shall be of a character and location suitable for use as a playground, playfield, or for other public purpose. And shall be relatively level and dry. And shall be improved by the applicant to reasonable standards such as providing access. Landscaping, play equipment, and any other reasonable improvements. The commission may permit the dedication of sites which contain unique distinctive character characteristics such as a marsh or a swamp. If it is determined that there would be no demand for an active recreation area. And if the area possesses some unusual qualities. Total frontage on a street must be fifty feet and no other dimension of the site shall be less than two hundred feet unless approved by the commission. Where dedication of open space will not meet the purposes of this section, the subdivider may, with approval by the commission. Pay a fee to the town or pay a fee to the town and transfer land to the link to the town in lieu of the requirement to provide open space. The applicant requests to make a payment to the town of Groton, ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided. The applicant requests to make a payment to the town of Groton, ten percent of the fair market value of the land to be subdivided prior to the approval of subdivision. The applicant has provided an appraisal of the property. In keeping with the standards for open space set forth in the subdivision regulations and due to the topography of the easterly portion of the property, the lack of suitable coastal access and area to create an inviting destination, the applicant requests the commission accept the fee in lieu of an actual land conveyance. This will give the town of Groton the opportunity to utilize the payment to secure more suitable coastal access in another area of the town. Um, Mr. Paul Antonio has taken some photographs. Oh, let me share with you first. Considerations um that he has stated the hillside grade is too steep to walk down or walk up. Well, I, I won't go into the change in elevation as I stated it was um forty percent. The base of the hillside is tidal wetlands, no access to the Mystic River except over wetlands and tidal marsh. Result of access cannot predict extent of the reach to the wetlands. River Road is a scenic road with no allocated roadside parking and a negative impact to the abutting properties. Actually going to pass them out. So if we turn to number one photo is looking down the hillside. So that would be looking basically from behind the houses at the top, you know. It drops off from elevation thirty to about elevation six. That way. And then number two is the middle of the hillside and that gives you an indication of the slope. And then photographing the three is looking up the hillside. So there really isn't a good flat area for recreational purposes. Does anyone have any questions about the photos? Okay, I believe I'll conclude with that and um, do you have any questions?
Well, we'll open it up to the staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Um, so same reminder that Dave had about this, uh, this is a public hearing and thirty-five days to render here. Um, certificates of mailing have been received from all property owners and a legal notice has been posted. We have received an email from an abutter which was sent to all of you, that's Ken Peters. Did everyone get that? And then the project, as we just discussed, is in the CAM boundary and is subject to the provisions of the Coastal Management Act. I did speak to the deep environmental analyst on this who provided, provided me with some background information on coastal act, access requirements. Um, in essence, this project is citing a non-water dependent use on the waterfront, so it's the purview of the commission to determine if providing public coastal access is suitable anywhere on the site. Um, the applicant is proposing one waiver, as she mentioned, that's the waiver of the sidewalk requirements. Public Works has looked at this waiver and has been approval of this waiver and it ha- I have a motion sheet for you.
This is, this is what I was passed up.
You got an email, I also had.
So I'll open it up to the public if they have any questions or comments. Say one, your hands up, the hands up. So, so opening up to commissioners, I'll start with you, Hal.
I don't have any. Issues with generally a question about, uh, since this whole property does face the uh, it's just a marsh out there. And in fact, just as you mentioned, to the very, very south at high tide, you might be able to wade your way into the Mystic River. Which leaves me the question is why is the site so strangely gerrymandered? Is that a lot number?
It's one.
One, right, well, not number one, has that long appendage heading down to the high tide part, which we're saying really doesn't you access. So why is that done? You have to be at the, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to be at the mic. We can hear you, but they can't.
That actually was done at the request of the client.
Or why?
River frontage.
So they want to claim it is river frontage. Even though it's bizarre. I mean, it, it doesn't seem to harm. I think in de facto, if you don't have a fence, it's not going to bother. That is notably bizarre that well, allows lot two to think it's got this tremendous frontage, but doesn't. It's actually got a thirty foot or so boundary between it and the marsh.
They can claim it for aesthetic purposes.
I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't stuffed in there in some clever way to make the square footage work out better. Was that, that just was actually just so they could claim it to waterfront.
I believe so.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yes, you stand, stand up and state your name and address.
I'm Tom Paul Antonio and I'm from twelve oh six River Road in Groton. And the purpose of the gerrymandered allocation was to ensure that the property owners would maintain a view of the Mystic River, not necessarily access, but primarily because of you. This, as you saw in the pictures, the hillside is heavily treed. How do you maintain that? So that was the intent.
You, you the property owners or the new property?
The new property owners.
I was going to allow the property owners from lot one to do something to obscure the lot property owner's view from lot two eastward, but either way, I don't think, I, I don't think it matters, right? But okay, but you did, I just thought it was so strange to have that on there. Uh, and ending down where the Mystic River sort of begins, that that was what you're saying is it, that's just a view.
Correct.
A way, a mechanism to protect the view.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Other than that, I kind of agree, it's the sidewalk. Certainly okay with the uh fee and loom. There's no place there for, as far as coastal access, public coastal access, I don't think it's appropriate place due to everything about the area of that marsh to allow it for uh public coastal access and it's appropriate to just allow it for this private use. So.
Um, just I was struggling trying to figure out how the driveway is going to work uh on this proposal. Um, maybe if you could just walk me through, say I was in a car, um, going from the road, what kind of um grade are we talking about? Um, do we go on a sort of idle areas or anything else? It's a fairly busy um drawing here, which is the place, it just is what it is.
So from the brick pavers. It takes, it goes in like perpendicular to River Road and then it takes a turn to the north. And then basically parallel, parallels pillar. And then goes off into one two zero six River Road.
And is that a flood zone it's going into when all of a sudden the driveway gets light colored?
It's flood zone X, but um there's two um designations of flood zone X on this property. Put me on sheet three. We have flood zone X, which is area of minimal flood hazard and flood zone X, which is zero point two percent annual chance flood hazard.
And um, what kind of vegetation does it go through? Does it go through any sort of marsh like?
Oh, not at all. No, not at all. It's all just um mixed hardwoods with some um white pine.
Well, I saw, yeah, uphill, there's a lot of white oaks for supplement here. But what kind of grade then does it have if you're going from, so you're driving your car?
Well, um, as I said, it's not completed. The original design was to keep it under eight percent, so it wouldn't have to be paved. Um, but he's in the process of still constructing it because he did get the permit to construct that driveway. So um, but as you go up in this area, it's graded so that it's um trying to keep under eight percent.
Do you think it is, or is it over eight percent?
Um, I haven't shot it since he started constructing it, but um that was the plan that, that, you know, that's what he's trying to adhere to when he constructs it. But yeah, there is no tidal vegetation in here or anything.
Things, that's all I had.
See. I apologize if you went through this, but what's listed is proper reserve. What if, what was that?
Where was that now?
On, on the same picture right there. Looking at different pictures.
Those little boxes.
Yeah, those little boxes that are coming off of lot one.
Septic system.
That's a septic system.
Oh, right here, yes. So we have the proposed house and garage. Um, proposed primary septic system and the proposed reserve, a hundred percent reserve septic area. And those, you know, may change when the person who built on this lot chooses to, you know, put the house in a different location or um, if he does that, he would have to, he or she would have to maybe do additional test tools at that time to prove that the lot's still viable. That would really be up to the landowner, but we, we're demonstrating compliance so that we're we're showing all the building setbacks and all the necessary minimum, minimum separating distances that are required by the public health code. And um, putting it all together, I know there's a lot of information there, but you almost need to see all that information together to be able to determine that it's.
But tonight, we're just doing, we're just talking about the subdivision.
That's correct.
Just so this is feasible. That's what they, but it doesn't approve the actual location test. You can fit something in. So uh, again, getting back to our appendage coming down, is, is the intent to um, clear that or?
Oh, I don't believe so. And no, because we're not proposing any activity. See, most of that is within the fifty foot coastal resource setback. Nothing is happening within that swath between the light blue and the dark blue line. No activity.
So even in the future, you know, there's no path or clearing or, you know.
I, you'd have to apply for a permit, which I think believe would be denied.
Yeah, that's, that's what I envisioned.
Wouldn't there be some clearing to put the houses in? I mean, it's hard to tell from these pictures, but where the law is on course. There's a lot of trees in.
Yeah, the pictures are really basically from, if you look at this thirty foot contour elevation down to the approximate tidal wetland boundary. That's the picture looking down and then the picture looking back up. This is the coastal setback boundary, the dark blue, and so I can get my scale, but both houses are way westerly of that line and septic, all the conceptual lot development. There's no grading taking place, no.
But that, we've already gone down the hill, I guess, is when, when, when you have that appendage. We've already. Okay.
Or is there anything really going down that hill to the river? We know you, down to where it says mystic, yeah. Is that just a piece of property?
Yeah, well, once you hit right here, you're, you're hitting the tidal wetland boundary.
Right.
And then this property line, um, that is zero point nine, me hot, mean high water.
And then you have your dark blue above that. So can you cut anything between those two lines, the light blue and the dark blue?
I'm not exactly positive about that.
Sorry.
Put it a little light blue and dark. I'm sure you can't clear cut it, but you may be able to finish.
Right, so any activity within the tidal wetland is under jurisdiction of the D E E P, right? Coastal resource setback that's shown on here is a zoning regulation. Um, it doesn't allow um, the parking lots, houses, structures, whatever. It certainly would allow a path in that area.
Well, pedestrian access.
It would.
So you could cut it.
You lost, sure, but you, you, you certainly could, but keep in mind, there's the sediment and erosion control regulations. So um, anything over half an acre needs approval and a sediment erosion control plan.
Wish I had the good colors on air. Hard to see them. Yeah, I couldn't see them. The light, the light blue versus the dark blue versus the the subdivision regulations specify side lot lines shall be at right angles to street lines. Why can't we meet that? Is there any reason? Yeah, which is this dogleg thing that to land that you can't use or, or walk on or shouldn't be. I mean, it's, it's almost all in the tidal wetlands, but why, why shouldn't that lot line go straight back? Like the subdivision regulations say.
That's what he was saying, because that was his way of preserving.
Yeah, but why can't, why shouldn't we be following the subdivision regulations? We're not following the subdivision regulations, which say the lot should be rectangular in shape and the side lots should be a straight line from the front to the back.
I have to defer to my client on that.
It's actually a different waiver.
Mm-hmm.
Then it's different, right?
So can I clarify language from the regulations?
Yes.
So side lot lines shall be at right angles to street lines or radial to curving street lines unless a variation from this rule will give a better street or lot plan. Depth and width of properties reserved or laid out for business commercial. But basically, unless a variation from this rule will give a better street.
It doesn't, it doesn't give a better.
It's not a waiver.
No, no, I understand, but but it doesn't meet the objective of the regulation and it says you should have a rectangular shape and it doesn't do that. This dogleg thing is not realistic. And it doesn't do that. This dog leg thing is not realistic. If you draw, draw a straight line from that house up in lot one down to where the water, you think the water. River is, it doesn't go down over there, goes down over here, which isn't on on the within the property.
I'm not sure I follow that.
If they, if the only reason for putting this dog leg thing in there, you can only access it. Down to there, right?
Correct.
To there. Why should it have all this area? This, all that area should go to that lot.
Well, as Mr. Paul Antonio explained, he wanted to be able to have protect that view.
What view? Draw the straight line. If you're looking out to the river, it's a straight line, right? Where is that straight line from?
Well, each lot is looking in this direction.
Yeah, which isn't, has nothing to do with what's over here, actually.
Well, these are conceptual. I mean.
That's not conceptual. It's the line that laid out for the property. That's not conceptual.
No, but the house locations are conceptual.
Yeah, just draw a straight line in any direction.
Have it go that way.
No. Straight, if you put a pin, a hole in the plan with a pin in it. And a string, that would be a straight line. It doesn't have anything to do with this. If you want to see the river, you're gonna go over here or over here. It doesn't go over there.
The river is actually just.
The river is here.
Right, correct.
Right along in there. So you can look straight down. Going right down like that, parallel to the river.
Hillside's there.
Well, then you're going there. It's got a hill over there too.
What if the viewer is this way? He doesn't own that, so he can't do that.
Yeah, but then it has nothing to do with this dog leg. You don't need the dog leg in there. If you're looking.
If you're looking from there to here.
You can't because it's a height, high area.
Here's the property up in this area. And down in here, where.
We're talking.
This would be this.
Yeah, but there's no reason.
So we're looking.
There's no reason for that.
That way.
No, that's it. That's not, that's the existing house. Um but this is the contour. This is the high area in here.
That's correct.
And you'd be up here. Up in here or where lot one is. I can't see this. Doesn't show the.
Well, there's, there's that loop there, so it is important to take this here.
Yeah.
Forgetting it there.
Yeah.
He's looking across at an angle there.
You're looking down over here, not nothing to do with the dog leg.
Well, that that would be the dog.
No, the dog leg goes all the way down here. If he wanted to have the dog leg in there. Why? But I I don't know why you'd want to do that. I would think you'd want to bring this lot line down like that and just go straight back. It doesn't affect the view.
Well, we wouldn't meet the area requirement requirement at this point.
Yes, you would, because you'd be taking land out of here and putting it in.
And you're saying you chop, chop.
We have a power line easement, which is. Right, and there's also remnants of a power line easement this year. We're trying to stay away from, and the reason being that. They took the poles down, but they haven't released any kind of document on that, so I haven't taken the note off the plan.
I still don't understand why you can't take the acreage out of here, putting it in there and just lowering this line down.
The easement would just put it on the other lot.
Yeah, right, so that part doesn't make any difference.
If you move the ten feet, twenty feet, it just, that would just put the easement in lot one. No, that would, that part doesn't matter.
Well, I can't really calculate in my mind the area.
That's the record. That's why I.
I just, it was just a way of twisting the square footage. It doesn't make any sense to put all this area that's not accessible into lot one. And. I think we should be meeting the subdivision regulations. Their regulations. And and it.
I believe we followed the intent of the subdivision.
I just read it. It doesn't. How you, how do you say the configuration of each lot shall be laid out generally to approximately a rectangular shape? It doesn't do that. You don't call that. That looks like a flag lot, a long access road. And nobody's gonna walk down there, put some maintenance burden or property burden on lot one that shouldn't be there. And could you explain this easement for this driveway? That want to put in the north that goes down to this house, house that now has easement from Main Street.
Say that one more time.
That that driveway. Lot one, yes, that doesn't feed this property at all. It feeds, it would feed the house. Existing house at twelve oh six.
Both. Here's the.
Oh, yes. Okay, but how how long is that distance? From there to the other house? It's a huge distance, long distance.
It's a long distance, right?
Is that realistic? And should we be adding another burden to River Road? I mean, River Road is pretty narrow road. That shouldn't have a lot of traffic on it.
It's just one driveway, though.
It's cars. If you put a driveway and a car comes on it.
They also have access from Main Street.
That's where, that's where their main, that's where the only access is today.
May I, may I instruct, please?
Yes, you say your name, please.
Sure, it's Tom Paul Antonio and twelve oh six River Road, the access for twelve oh six Road today. This is upside down, is here.
If you look at the GIS map, it isn't.
I can show you my D.
I thought by D maybe, but not, it's not used.
Oh, yes, it is used.
You use that as an access?
Yes, sir.
I thought there was sort of a goat path after you get up.
No. I bring in cement trucks, oil trucks, um sand and gravel, sheet rock comes in through this gate. Comes down here, turns and goes up to the house.
Because when you look at the GIS view, it doesn't show that at all. And how? How destructive is it to build a driveway, a shared driveway on the other side?
Here?
Yeah.
That's already done.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Been permitted.
This, the the apron is about forty percent complete.
Right.
This entire pathway has been cut in. I walked it with the fire department.
Uh huh.
Uh to make sure that there isn't an issue um to gain access from River Road up to the main house.
Mm hmm.
So they've walked that, there was no issue of the grade. Initially, there was a turning radius here, but we've changed.
That's what, that's what, yeah.
So.
Because it looked like the topography was pretty rough going up the hill. It isn't.
No.
Well, you really have it. So it does fit.
Yes, it's actually wider than what they initially had requested.
Okay.
Any more questions about this? This path?
No, because it looked like that path goes down to, on this plan. It looked like it went down to nothing. They go up.
Well, it goes down to this nine.
Road, but it isn't.
No.
Yeah, I didn't walk up in there. Okay, because I thought that was going to be abandoned by this project.
No.
No, if I could. You're not using.
Um when we sell the, when this is subdivided off.
Right. Eventually.
This becomes the, correct.
Right.
Um here.
It would, yeah.
This is where it'll be, um a rock wall will be constructed to segregate this lot from the rest of our property.
Mm hmm. Okay. The plan would be to put in that shared driveway.
It's.
First before you sell the lot.
This is already in. I just need to finish the apron.
Yeah, okay.
I guess the the, when I finish the apron, the top dressing is going to be three quarter inch minus crushed stone, which will go um to here, which is beyond what it currently exists. This is just the grass path. Yeah. Can we revisit your comment about the straight lines and the?
Yes.
So if you walked up to this property and stood um uh here.
Yeah.
You, you really can't see the river because of the vegetation on this hillside. Here, this lot, because of all of this vegetation, you can't see the river.
Right.
You can see the river today because there's no leaves. In in come May, it's obliterated, obliterated. When we first looked to sell this property, most people who came to look at it couldn't see the water because of all the vegetation on the hillside. So this, having had experience with another piece of property that had view restrictions on it. Was to ensure that anyone who built the house would have a view of the river.
Yeah, but.
Because you.
I don't see where you get the view from.
Because you would, you can control the vegetation on the hill.
Lot one, if you buy lot one.
If you buy lot one.
It's really the lot one view that would be.
Yes, that's correct, so.
How do you get a view from lot one?
Well.
Cut down the trees, correct.
No.
Well, then all the matured, ever any marked trees that would come down, most of the mature trees would stay. But all the saplings, which caused the major blockage of the view, would come down.
Yeah, and the other thing too is that when we originally tested here. For some reason, that's where the engineer laid out where the test bits go. But it could easily be swapped where the house is actually there. And the systems, you know, downhill from the house, so that that house. Houses view could never be obliterated by what lot two is doing. And down the road, there could always be prior to selling it, a sightline easement. A view easement, I'm sorry.
But the map is showing, I don't know, this isn't very good, but with the top hole, with the vegetation and stuff, there's all a lot of trees in here. So they basically have to be cut the whole part of their lot, your finger that goes down there.
Well, possibly in this area.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah, well, that.
Yeah, my fingers, I think, there goes big trees are quite.
And the rest is all marshland. I, it still just doesn't.
If I see the big trees, there's a better view. My tree picture.
Somewhere, it's when I was looking at a map that we can.
We're gonna have to put that in the record.
Yeah.
Can you take a screenshot? No, we'll have to put that into the record if you can take a screenshot of that.
Be happy, thanks.
If you were home, you could just share.
Right. Yeah.
I still don't understand why.
It wasn't be able to cut down those trees. When they're small trees.
So I think that's where it comes.
Well, they're not small.
Well, the biggest ones aren't a problem because. They're looking at the smaller trees so that they can see true under the trees. So I think.
I think a big one's probably a problem.
Yeah, the photographs really. Give you an idea of the size of the trees.
All those trees aren't a big problem.
Well, they they look bushy and since they're so low and they're also so high, I think it's gonna be right in the sight. But I don't know, in fact, this seems like, given where the tree is and the height of the tree and the kind of slope you have there. I think it would totally block your view.
It is. Yeah, I know, that's, you know, that would be got.
Well, it's the height of the.
You can only.
Like the house as shown here, I think of the house of. I work.
It's thirty some.
Oh. The contours in this area right now are about thirty six feet. Thirty feet over here. The tidal wetland boundary is about six feet elevation.
Twenty five feet. Kind of right, anything under a forty foot, anything less than a fifty foot tree would have to come down to to give you a view.
Oh, once you get down to the tidal wetlands, it's just the uh tidal growth in there.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you know, you can see.
Probably freeze down to that.
A lot, a lot of these are small.
So most of that land is. It's not accessible to walk on. It's all marshland. In the blue area, south of the, outside of the blue area or inside of. Say.
This area.
Yes.
This way is marsh.
Right.
That's correct.
So there's no.
So you're looking over.
There are no trees in there, so.
That's correct.
So the only trees at the max could be on the north west side of that line.
In this, in this area along the slope.
Right, at the net, at, yeah, nothing. So the line beyond that makes no difference, or the property line makes no difference.
That's all like right here, though. Right?
What's that?
I mean, we're essentially at one of them right there.
Yes.
That's why.
This whole thing here, there's nothing there.
Yeah, there's all, just that grass, I don't know what you call those weeds.
Yeah, just.
Fragmites. They're about six or eight feet tall.
So this portion, so actually this portion here from this, that's a stone wall there, that whole portion there, that portion. It's marsh, so that's not a view thing. It's just this, it's just this little piece here. The rest kind of doesn't matter.
Unless you're just using this to get your eighty thousand feet.
No, I mean, that's a substantial square footage right there. That is a substantial, you know, square footage, this swath of land right there.
Oh, you're making eighty thousand.
Because my husband says, I do my magic.
See, as I move that piece this way. This can. You can eat into that, but it's still, I don't know, that's, that's, as you said, that's a lot of area.
Yeah.
And it's just made, just to make it work.
I don't have a friend.
It's not the intent, but it's works.
Assuming eighty thousand is for something.
Which is questionable next to a tidal land, but it's, it works.
Yeah, but you have enough here. So I guess you can move with it. But it's not intended for walking down into that area.
No.
So it's not accessible, it's really. Land that's not accessible. Or lot area that's not accessible.
Right, I mean, we run into that all the time, you have. On a piece of property. Lots of inaccessible land.
No, I understand, I. Because when I looked at this, it just looks strange and it really doesn't meet. The basic for doing a normal subdivision. Basic rule. And I was afraid that you wanted people to walk down into that area and you really don't. Cause it's not something you want to.
No, absolutely not, that's why.
You don't want it accessible.
You know, requested that you accept the fee and move open space.
Oh, no, I, I don't have, I understand that, no, you're right, there's no.
There's no.
No open space.
Place right there.
Alright, I don't have any other questions.
I just want, is, is the easement part of the calculation for lot one?
Lot one area includes the easement area.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is that total area right now?
Lot one is two point zero three acres.
So it's quite a little precise. Cause it's really eighty thousand feet, but, yeah, not eighty-eight thousand.
Anyway. So it can be, it can be snuck up, it's. You know, we can, uh, cut it back a little.
You could, you're not gonna get rid of that, that whole.
No, somebody has to sort the. The title wetlands in. My concern was really only. Access, I don't think you want access to the, that area. If you split it up fifty fifty. Down to the, in the marsh, it's fine. Alright, does anyone have any other? The applicant have any? Thing else they wanna say, state? Staff? That needs to be addressed.
Further.
More questions, information?
And I'll make a motion then to. Close the, uh, the public hearing. Second, moved in seconds, any what? Questions on the motion? So vote on the motion to close the public hearing for, uh. Subdivision twenty-three dash four-one, so River Road. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. Okay. We can move on to our next item is consideration of public hearings. And subdivision twenty-two. They show. We have a draft motion that was presented. Assume the applicant.
Yeah, you, you, you all have copies of the.
Right. Any applicant seen this? Any concerns, does anyone on? Commission have any? Concerns with the motion or the waiver? Somebody wanna go through, make. You wanna make a motion to? Small, you want. That's a small print, you wanna, yes.
Okay, motion, uh, to approve a request for a waiver at section four point seven for N one. Of the subdivision regulations to eliminate requirement of a sidewalk along the subdivision lot. Frontage on Pleasant Valley Road South. Findings, the commission finds that a sidewalk on the east side of Pleasant Valley Road South. Does not exist, there currently exists a ten foot wide multi-use path on the west side of Pleasant Valley Road South. The address is pedestrian access.
That's the right.
Yeah, that's the right ones, yes, she's reading the right, oh, I'm sorry.
That's why it's tough.
Did you have a question this? Okay, so that was it.
And this is for subdivision.
Yep.
Twenty-two oh three.
Yep.
Move, second, is there a second move and second it? Steve, get that. I had problems with. Recording the, the seconds, that's. Does anyone have any? What concerns on the, uh, on the waiver? Okay, we'll vote on, on the, uh, motion for the waiver for. Sidewalk salt, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously.
We do the next?
Next one, yeah.
Okay, motion to approve a request for a waiver of section. Five point four per N one. Of the subdivision regulations to eliminate the requirement. That public improvements be completed and offered for acceptance. By the town prior to the issuance of a building permit. Findings, the commission finds that since the subdivision is limited to two per N two lots. With frontage on existing streets, the extent of public improvements is limited. It would be part of the site work for a future building and its associated parking lot. May I have a?
Is there a second? Moved in second and. Does anyone have any concerns with this waiver? So vote on. On the waiver for. The wa- the waiver for, uh.
Yep.
For the, uh. For payment of open space. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. Wanna make a waiver, uh, motion for the.
Re-subdivision?
Re-subdivision, yeah, or you wanna pass, even pass it.
Oh, that's a lot of words.
Re-subdivision of Bishop and Sorac, four twenty-one Route twelve with the following modifications. One, in accordance with section four point nine per N five, a payment in lieu of open space of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The equivalent ten percent of the fair market value of the land prior to the subdivision. Shall be made prior to the, to recording the plan. Two, street trees will be provided at the proper intervals. Along both Route twelve and Pleasant Valley Road South. If any of the existing street trees that are shown quote to remain, unquote, are removed. They shall be replaced with an approved street tree. Three, the commission acknowledges that the pre-existing pedestrian walkway. Originally connecting Connecticut Route twelve and Pleasant Valley Road South. Is no longer visible or necessary and will not be reestablished. Four. The Route twelve section of sidewalk that is currently by two minutes shall be replaced with a five foot wide concrete sidewalk. This section of sidewalk stretches from the approximate location of the existing Route twelve crosswalk to the northeastern boundary marker of the property. This revision shall be reflected on the final subdivision plans prior to recording. Five, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state, or local agency. Shall require additional review by town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. Six, all technical items raised by staff shall be addressed.
Sir, second, second. Does anyone have any question?
But a cut, a concern, I don't know if we need to put it in here, but, or I don't know the tree about. Pedestrian walkway. Let's just have it somewhere in the record.
Yeah, what else?
And will not be reestablished, and we, we, we discussed is that they would not do anything that would preclude it being established in the future.
So maybe, uh, it will not be as reestablished as part of the subdivision.
Right, and the site plan might require, so. Might be reestablished as part of this subdivision.
Okay.
So when we get to the site plan, we might revisit that.
That path or something in there.
Is that okay with you? Is you seconding?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the modification.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't need a motion, you agree to the.
As modified.
As modified, okay. Anyone have anything else, now we'll vote on. On the motion to, uh, approve the re-subdivision. Four twenty-one Route twelve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. So you have your. Oh, you can come around later. Now we have, uh. Consideration of public hearings for the, uh. Subdivision of Aaron Volantino. You wanna make that work?
Okay, so that one.
Bring extras in case.
I saw the applicants, and they have no problems with it. Any concerns to the motion?
Uh, no.
And we did have that one thing from Ken Peters, I don't know if we have to address that. That was the Arbour fighting, his beer, his pet deer is eight.
Yes, so, um, Mr. Peters is on the call actually if he wants to, no, he can't, oh, he, oh, it's not, it's not.
It's just, we need to address. That, or is that a considered?
You know, it's not a requirement of the, of the subdivision regulations or zoning regulations. So.
So it's. Anything, it's a thing.
And I think, or it's your recommendation, I don't need to put anything in writing.
That's what I'm, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Well, I think that is the one.
About there, and it's the one Arbour.
Be tape, the green giant, whatever, the deer, don't eat one kind, that's right, that's right, they might nibble at it, but they don't.
They don't like it.
They still don't mind it. We like a motion to approve a request for a waiver of section four point seven. Brand one of the subdivision regulation to eliminate the requirement of a sidewalk along the subdivision lot. Frontage on River Road findings are that the commission finds that sidewalk on the east side of River Road does not exist. And this area topography falls dramatically. Per condition of section one point one zero, these physical surroundings, including the topographic conditions, present a particular hardship to the owner.
This is for subdivision twenty-three.
Twenty-three, one, zero River Room.
Is there a second?
Second.
One second, Steve. Does anyone have any? Questions, concerns with the motion, so vote on. On the motion to approve the waiver request. For the sidewalk on River Road, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. And we have the motion.
Motion to approve heron, fellow of Antonio subdivision zero River Road with the following modifications in accordance with section four point nine per N five. In, in lieu of open space of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars, equivalent of ten percent of the fair market value of the land prior to the subdivision. Shall be made prior to the recording of the plans. All interior stone walls disturbed on site be restacked along the line. That all necessary final and signed easements and common drive maintenance agreements documents are provided to staff prior to recording final plans. All for all technical items raised by staff shall be addressed.
Sir, second.
Second.
Smooth and second, got that, so. Does anyone have any questions on the motion? Hearing none and. Almost. Vote on a motion to approve the. Aaron. Ball and Antonio. Subdivision. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the extensions, motion is carried unanimously. And we have the cam.
Motion to approve this coastal site plan application, S I T twenty-three dash zero one, based on the following findings. The commission hereby finds that the application as modified is consistent with all applicable goals and policies. CGS twenty-two A, S twenty-two, or incorporate all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse impacts. On imposed activity of coastal resources, existing and future water dependent activities.
Sir, second.
Second.
Move in second, I saw. Does anyone have any questions on the motion? Concerns, so vote on the motion to approve the coastal site plan. For. S I T twenty-three oh one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion is carried unanimously. Sir, with luck with that. Subdivision, two more. Units of affordable housing. Oh, we need affordable housing.
That's true.
It's affordable for billionaires.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay. Our next, uh, item, it's approval of the minutes for previous meetings, we have. Meeting minutes for, uh, February fourteenth. I'll entertain a motion for. Approval of the, uh. Minutes of. February fourteenth.
So move.
Smooth, is there a second? Does anyone have any corrections? They had one on page four. On, uh, Bob Gardner, uh, correspondence. Along, along the halfway mark. Where it. It says the commission discussed and stated that the bill lacks standard. I don't know what that means. I think we had some discretion. In the discussion, I don't know.
You did, you, you said that the language was not precise.
Okay, or something like, just, or you could put something after standard, just what standard. Was not standard English. Was not precise, it's probably a good term. Listen, I thought it was something different, I think that was. It's too fuzzy. Can't put that, that's not good. Does anyone have anything else? We covered all the details. So vote then on. On the, uh, motion to approve the, uh, minutes of February fourteenth as modified, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, no, Steve.
Gonna do it, I'm gonna do it, I was not here. One abstention. I was not here.
You're not some. Just had to say it made sense. You can understand. The motion is carried to be in favor of one abstention. Lucky it's not a waiver. Okay. Public communications, does anyone have any communications on the mission? Staff. Does anyone have the public have any communications? Yes, their hands up. Right, okay. Okay, special permits, we. Have non subdivisions, none. Light plans. All business, only text amendment cannabis regulations pre-application discussion.
Right.
Staff, have any comments?
So, in your packet, um, is a clean copy of, of the regulation, it incorporates the changes that you discussed at the last meeting. Um, the one, the comments from the town attorney that you were comfortable with. Um, I will note that I did have a discussion with the town attorney. Um, I will note that I did have a discussion with the town attorney about the section titled distance between establishments, section five point one dash fifteen dot A. He's, his recommendation is still that this not be in here because it was not specifically allowed either by the statute. However, he also notes that, um, you know, this, this has not been tested at this point, um, but that is still stands to be his regulation that that not be in here. I know that you folks were. You wanted it in here and you were very comfortable with it. So what I'm hoping for tonight is that, that you've read through it. It makes sense, um, and, and I can go ahead and submit an application. And we can have a hearing.
I just had that one question. I, I just think use, uses should be changed to use. I don't know what I was.
Right, in that.
In section five point one fifteen. Point A.
Yeah.
On page, well, it was one sixty-nine. And I think at the top of the next one where it reads, no building or premises or part of any building or premises shall be permitted for adult use cannabis uses if the lot, I think that use should be use. I don't know what others think. Well, it's only one. It, it's the use of can of whatever cannabis uses. As opposed.
Kind of covers.
No, but I mean, products, different dispensing.
And there's a definition of it.
That's what the definition.
Yep, that's right.
I got concerned because I thought uses meant there were some other uses other than cannabis.
Right, I think we can, we can make that singular on both those sections.
We have cannabis use.
Right.
Right.
Right. And then I'll, I'll also note, um, where we have, um, what zones these uses will be allowed in on the application that will actually appear as the table of permitted uses and you will see those in there.
Yeah. Yeah, you just fixed that up.
Right, that's right.
So it looks more like.
That's right.
But the pages would be.
Exactly.
So once it's cleaned up. This means we control.
All good.
We're really controlling then the, the, the off or sale for our site.
Correct.
This wouldn't be all done by state licensing. You know, if you wanted to run a restaurant, serve your fancy brownies.
I just have one question. You know, refresh my memory on this thing. Um, it's down when you, we're talking about cannabis food and beverage manufacturers, small scale. Um, we were going to allow that in RU with SP dash or slash C. And I was just wondering why we would allow a manufacturer in a rural area. It's about three thousand square feet. Could be the size of the.
I think the discussion was that it was similar enough to the other small scale, uh, food production that you also allow in the RU zone. And that it would be controlled because it's special permit, uh, as well as the conditions that are in here.
All right. Good. Thanks.
Anybody have anything else?
Do we, do we, um, cover any of the mobile aspects of thing, of cannabis sales?
What do you mean?
Well, I know that New York City is having a hell of a time with.
Oh, you mean like you have a limousine and you can.
No, 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 just like a.
Oh, like, like a mobile restaurant.
A mobile.
That is, that is not, that is not allowed by these regulations.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we somehow, yeah, I guess New York is, uh, what's his name? Adams here and he was saying that we only permit, you know, so many of these and I just like ten on every.
But in Colorado, they were running limousines and you could smoke marijuana in the limousine. It would just drive you around town.
Yeah, you go.
I mean, things get ridiculous.
Yeah.
But this is all fixed. So this sounds pretty good then.
Okay, I'll draft up the, the, um, application and we'll give you a call, Jeff, so you can come in and sign.
Okay.
Um, and I think at the same time, we'll also do the accessory dwelling unit change. So that's minor enough.
Oh.
I'll put that in.
Oh, that's the one that just brings us into.
Yes, exactly.
State statute.
And so that, that's a public hearing.
And then, yeah, we go to a public hearing.
And then we're on a time clock, right? Cause we're.
This one, we're not, but for data centers, we are. So we will be talking about that at the next meeting. Um, Jeff Davis did, um, send us some revisions based on your discussion. I haven't had a chance to go through them yet, but we'll, we'll look at that at the next meeting.
Also. Does that still? That's the fourteenth of March. And that's adequate to support the time.
It is so far. Yeah, we're getting close, but yes, it is still good.
So we're moving along with big issues. That's great. No applications. Do you have any?
We do not.
No, no applications. And we have no referrals.
Correct.
Reported chair. We have a C I P meeting coming up on Monday, March.
Thirteenth.
When will you expect to get?
We're going to have that out by the end of this week.
Can we get hard copies?
Yes, you can. So when it comes out, we're going to send it to you in a digital format and ask if you want a paper copy. So just let us know.
I'd say I want to.
Hundred and forty pages or something.
It is, it is. So is everyone going to want a paper copy? I mean, we're going to send it to you digital. Well.
I hate to say, but I think I.
Okay, that's, yeah.
A lot of little print. Has it so little? Yeah.
Okay, you don't want. Okay, no, that's fine.
I have a potential conflict that's just come up. It's still potential. So just letting you.
Well, if you.
Paper copy, I can give you comments before.
There you go.
Yeah, give us a.
Our, our function is still just advisory.
That's exactly right. It's an eight twenty-four referral. So you're looking for consistency with plant conservation and development.
Well, it's not.
Well, yeah, but.
I mean, that's essentially what it is.
Yeah, it's advisor.
Right.
That requires our com- negative comment. Doesn't that affect?
It affects the vote.
A little bit more. That's there. And we have, well, that we have another four hundred thousand for Chevy. Meetings in the room. Here.
Yeah, or next door, yeah.
So that was a property. Can you reserve your parking place? Okay, reported commission. Does anyone on the commission have any thing to report? Staff have anything?
Nope.
And we have our two reports for application updates and A S P. Catch anybody have any concerns? We're coming up on, uh, Friar Tux thing. That will be ready for.
I don't know. It'll either be ready or we will have an extension.
Oh, you'll get it. We have another hot dogs. Just running that one. One time there was somebody running it. Down in the bank square, you know, by front of the, uh. For several years.
That's right.
Makes perfect sense.
Hmm, it's a good location.
Yeah, we approved that years ago.
Yeah. Oh, did you?
Yeah.
But I remember it came to planning.
Yeah.
I go cart and cannabis.
It's not real.
Have anything else? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second? Move in second. All those in faith. You are not abstaining from that vote.
No.
All right, great. Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry.